January 9, 4:00 p.m. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Ottawa City Commission Study Session. We'll start with public comments. Do we have any?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. That'll move us on to items to be placed on our regular City Commission Agenda. Commissioners, our first proclamation is recognizing January 16, 2023 as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Can we get an approval to, you know, for the proclamation? Then I'll read it and then Richard Jackson's here to accept it today. So we can.
Good.
What?
Yeah, I'll say so.
Okay. So do we have consensus to approve this proclamation?
Yes.
All right, I'll read it. Whereas on October 19, 1983, the U.S. Congress passed legislation making the third Monday of every January, beginning with 1986, the day America would honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. with a national holiday. And whereas on January 16, 2002, the Ottawa City Commission made the King Holiday an official city holiday. And whereas, this is the first national holiday to honor an individual black American. And whereas, the King Holiday affords all of us an opportunity to reflect upon the past while seeking hope, determination, and an opportunity to act upon the promise of the future. And now therefore, the governing body of the City of Ottawa, Kansas, does hereby recognize Monday, January 16, 2023, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and reminds all citizens to remember that the legacy of Dr. King lives on in each of us. And we are all responsible to promote, teach, and live the American dream. Sign this. It says 18th, but 9th day of January 2023 by me, Mayor Eric Crowley. Richard, you want to come on up?
I was going to suggest that Richard, the other Richard in the room, it's two of us, but that Richard come up. Yes, actually, I was going to suggest that you give, you give the proclamation to Richard. And.
Come on.
I'll let for change.
Richard's there.
Yeah.
Right next to you.
Take it the other way.
A handful of grateful nations.
One, two, three, two, one, two, one, one, two, three.
Hey, do we want to move them a little bit so it's not taking this?
Yeah, the projector light was in the space a little bit.
There we go. Hey, over here right in front of the door.
Is anybody in the studio light?
Yeah, we got it.
Oh, yeah, this is great.
Right on the door.
You get the birthday.
Oh, this is very much.
All right, one, two.
Here in three days. Still.
I'm going to get that to you. Yeah, just, I'll make a couple, just a couple comments. The reason I suggested that you give it to the city manager is over the years and ever since he's been city manager, has been able backwards to make sure that whatever we do turns out as best possible way it can. And also thanking the City Commission for your, for your involvement in commissions through the years. This year is a little bit, a little bit different. I guess things are color, it just turned things upside down. You were talking about Facebook earlier. Now, when I was on a commission, it was pretty straightforward to come to the meeting and make a comment. You didn't have to deal with Facebook and all of that. But we're not going to do the program that we've done in the, we've done in the past. We have the proclamation today. Tomorrow, we're going to do a panel or round town, a roundtable discussion, either here or in the chambers. I think at 3:00, you're welcome to attend. It's going to have an open discussion on what the Dr. Martin Luther King Holiday means. Talking about inclusiveness, I like to say it's for everybody. It's, Dr. King was African-American, but what he did affected all of us in this country. And I think as we look at the world today, the country today, the question you can ask is, is the dream still alive? Or is it on life support? So we're going to have that discussion tomorrow. And then we'll go to COFO on that holiday and we'll do some things there. We'll plug in the whole discussion somehow. We'll figure out the plug-in way of the proclamation, recognize the essay winners. Essays are down, we only got 52. That's the smallest number we've ever had, used to get that from one class. And there's a number of reasons for that, and I won't go into that now. But we will celebrate the holiday one way or the other and try to tie it into inclusiveness, that it affects the whole community. But Dr. King did for African-Americans, he did for the country as a whole. So I think we need to keep that trying to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that'll move us on. Do we have a, we have a proclamation recognizing January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and a proclamation recognizing January 29th as 2023 as Kansas Day. Are we okay with moving those on? I'm sorry. And our minutes, I might as well include those, for December 7th, regular meeting, December 19th, study session, or December 21st, regular meeting. Okay, moving that on to our regular agenda? Okay, we'll do that. Thank you. All right, items for presentation and discussion. The first one is a review of our 2023 funding agreements. And we will start with Bird Paul's Animal Shelter. Please.
All right, so commissioners, these are just on here. You've seen them before. There have been no big changes over the years, but just the last opportunity for you to ask questions of what's in them or just have one final look at them before we ship them out for signatures that wind up on your regular meeting agenda.
Do we have anybody to, is Vanessa available? Anybody on? Please. Yes. Vanessa?
No.
Do you have anything you want to say about the funding agreement?
Unless you want me to cover the amounts or what I'm earnings.
No, I don't think so. Commissioners, do you, do you have any concerns or questions that you have for the, for the funding agreement with Bird Paul?
Well, yes, I guess I've just got that concern that came from the citizen about allowing banned breeds to be in the city limits. And so I guess I'd kind of like to wait on this a little bit, find a little more information on that. If it's happening and what to do about it if it is.
Well, you, you won't deal with this until the 18th? 18th anyway. And that's a simple question. I mean, that's a simple way to, as Commissioner Kayler said, it says in there that you'll follow all the laws of the federal, state, and local. So that's a simple issue to find out if that's happening.
I guess we won't have a study session on the 16th.
But it would be nice to see the email so, so that at least the entity being accused could see, not necessarily who sent it, but see what the specific complaint was.
I think it's good idea. You can redact the name and send it to her and that'd be okay?
Would that run through you?
Just to ask.
Would that run through you?
Just ask, we don't have to.
What are you saying, sir?
We don't, we don't. I don't, I don't feel comfortable in forwarding an email that a citizen has sent to me. But I don't think it's wrong for us to ask the director.
I'm not suggesting that you forward the email, but I think in all fairness to the organization that's being complained about, you ought to have a question and articulate what the concern is.
Mayor Perkins, if you could, you know, write that email and then send it to them. And if we could see the responses, the commission could see the response. I think unless that doesn't answer the question that you have or that we have, I think that would probably be sufficient for all of us.
I think maybe even a phone call or a visit out there.
Yeah, we'll call. Okay. Let me, let me, I'll take that on.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or concerns about our agreement with Bird Pauls? Okay, that'll move us on to our, our agreement that we have with Ottawa Main Street. Any?
And you do have the Ottawa Main Street.
I was going to say, anybody from Main Street want to say anything? Or does anybody have any questions?
Well, just that then. Or do you want to?
Um, I, I don't have any questions per se, but I'm like, if you have any, I am here to answer them, but.
We are working on, we almost have a full board. We have more coming tonight that we're hopefully bringing onboard. We've been working on building the core so that we can move forward. It can't just be five or six of us doing all the work.
And by full board, I think our bylaws say 12 board members or something to that effect. So it's a large board. So when we say we're not a full board currently, it's not that we don't have anybody, it's that we do not have 12.
Yeah. And we're not saying that we would even go to that. We just really realized early on that, for example, the Christmas parade, three or four people to pull that off is, takes a little bit more.
So what is a meeting rate?
Thank you.
What is a quorum then? Am it to be seven or do you have seven board members?
It's one over half of what our full board is at the moment. So like right now, we have seven.
Okay.
So four would be the quorum.
But you have seven board members now. Somebody said you don't do anything, I guess, right? Or what?
No, I think their quorum is noted as half plus one.
Half plus one.
Of active board members.
But if it's tw- half of the active board?
Sounds like they have a range. Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
As our bylaws say that we can fit up to 12 on the board. We're not saying we're going to go to 12.
Seven, so you need four there. Okay, gotcha.
Along with filling our committees too. We, we realized since having Scott, the Kansas Director, really opened up our eyes to a lot of what Ottawa Main Street as a whole can offer. And so filling those board seats and our committees and that kind of stuff is pretty much what we've been working really hard on lately. Because again, that, like, things like the Christmas parade, we realized pretty early on that. Yeah, it's a, it's a lot. And, and being part-time right now, and it's a lot. And that we recognize that there were still some spots that we may not have, we're not lacking, but that we can grow bigger and do better things with full committees and a variety of board members and that kind of stuff. And so we've been, that's really been our vocal point of figuring out that we can do a lot more with a lot more hands. So.
And filling those areas of expertise that we don't have yet. Like, I'm not good in some areas that somebody else is good in. So trying to fill those certain areas.
Absolutely. Being well-rounded.
So what's the tone of the business owners to Main Street now? What are you hearing from them?
Tough, honestly. Even getting feedback to know what they want or what they're needing is proving difficult, honestly. Friday, I spent all day with the design specialist from the State Board going around town. And we popped in and talked to quite a few different business owners. Lots of ideas, lots of potential there of opportunities that the Main Street or State Board even offers that we have available, like that our downtown historic district falls in. That I wasn't even aware of. It was very educational for me. I stood out of a lot of buildings and pointed, and I'm sure a lot of people inside the building were like, why are they standing out just pointing? Lot of opportunities there.
And I will say the, just based on going to the board meetings as part of the commission, businesses have become more favorable towards Ottawa Main Street than they were. There is, it's, we have taken the path of trying to earn their trust rather than just say, hey, we're good now. Like, it's, it's definitely been a, we're going to show you that this is what we can do. And, you know, showing up, being there, putting on the events and showing them that, that we can do it has been kind of the route to go.
Absolutely. And I will say, at the very beginning of some not even accepting my business card, to now, the jump that I've seen personally from just being the director and showing my face more and more and more, we have made strides, not, not walks. We've made strides and now I get smiled at when I walk into some doors and that I didn't before. And so I will say that there, we've grown a lot in that trust. I wouldn't say that it's right there just yet, but a lot of business owners have had more positive feedback lately because they're excited that I've been into their store five times instead of just once to hand out flyers and that kind of stuff. And so personally for me, I've seen attitudes change and they've been positive and way more inviting and that they see that we're working on it and that they love the fact that I've been in there more than just twice in the last six months. And so I, I feel better from my standpoint of, I feel way more comfortable walking into businesses and, and all that kind of stuff. And so I've seen a big difference from businesses welcoming me and, and listening. And truly, it's just been about being consistent, about not, not necessarily letting the, some negativity or even some pushback get too deep to me. And, and it's, it's definitely been better, I will say, yeah.
How's it been for you? Are you still students and maybe I'll navigate these hours of the day? I mean, I don't know how you do it all, but how was it going for you?
Somehow. I, so OU doesn't have any classes on Wednesdays. And so it's, it's awesome that I have a weekday to, that's not Monday because a lot of our stores are closed on Mondays. And so being able to hit stores and store owners on that weekday and then also have being in there on Saturdays. And some, some think that that's a whole of you have to work on a Saturday. But I, I like being able to hit both. Like, some stores aren't open on Wednesdays and they are open on Saturdays. And so it's working out really well right now. And OU still is continuing to not have classes on Wednesdays. And so it, it actually works out perfectly fine. And so I'm in the office for a decent amount of chunk on both of those times. And then to fill the rest of the 20 hours a week, it's board meetings on Wednes-, or board meetings once a month. And then going to a lot of community events as well. And people, I love, I love going to those community events too, to know what's going on in the city and how I can be more involved in those community events. And so I like going to those and the fact that I get to clock it in as hours is pretty fun too. So.
So you see a lot of chamber events and so.
Yeah.
But if you're there, that's important to be there.
Absolutely.
I think what Mayor Perkins was insinuating is that he's had a lot of free time now.
Yeah, you want to, you want to be on a committee. Well, I'd love to have you in the office with me on a Wednesday or Saturday if you want to come on by. I can put you to work. I have a lot of stuff. Yeah, I mean, there's a ton of stuff that, I mean, this job, absolutely, there is enough stuff for it to be full-time. 100%, 100% that there's enough. And I wish, I wish that I wasn't in school anymore, that I, I could dedicate a full 40 hours a week because there is enough work for there to be a full-time position. And so whatever I have to do to get it to be a full-time position, I'm, I'm in for a long haul, so, ready.
I will say, since you've taken over the feedback that I've just heard anecdotally from people, it's been nothing but good stuff.
Awesome.
So.
Good.
I understand doing a job part-time, it's, there's not a lot of time.
No. Well, there's, the rest of the board also helps. Our board is totally, we also have a volunteer that's on there Tuesdays and Thursdays. So if she needs some help in there, she can. Because we're asking the moon for 20 hours.
Yeah.
Totally, honestly.
But it's moving, it's moving. The moon is, the ball's rolling and I'm, I'm happy with the direction that we're going into. And I understand that it's going to take time to build that trust and, and I'm willing to do that. And so if that means that, I mean, honestly, I, I haven't spent only 20 hours on Main Street since I got this job. And I love the relationships that I've built. And if that means that I need to spend an extra hour and a half going to businesses or doing that kind of stuff, I, I like the hands-on learning experience. And that's, I've learned more on Main Street than I did in OU's four-block radius, so.
I'll tell them that.
Oh, never.
Give me a piece of paper there.
And I don't know if anybody answered this question at 32,000, is this the same as last year or is it different from a previous year?
I believe it's the same as the last agreement.
Same as last year.
Yeah. Which we, we had put, I believe, a pause on last year. So there actually wasn't 32,000 last year. Yeah, so it would have been the year before, is that correct?
Yeah, it was 30,000. Then a couple of years ago, we took the $2,000, it was also being spent out of Public Works and just added the $2,000 there so Public Works didn't have to get involved in any allocation back to.
For the corners.
For the corners.
Or whatever.
Your membership's staying pretty consistent and growing, tell us about that.
So we haven't actually been collecting memberships yet.
Okay.
Nothing had been collected in at least probably a year. So it's kind of just, we didn't feel right just asking when, right now we feel like we need to prove to them like what we can do for them. So our agenda was to build our board, build the foundation, start forming committees so that we can roll out a membership. So we're in the process, things are turning, it's just taking time.
That's the goal though, to have memberships, absolutely.
Any asks from us? I mean, obviously, they're probably not, there's probably a list.
Yeah, let me go. Can I email them to you?
We're just super appreciative of, like, anytime there's been any question. I mean, I know I have, Miss Landis over there has been a huge asset to us. Thank you. And just kind of, we went in blind, to be honest, whenever.
Every single one of us.
Yeah. Show, sometimes I think, what did Emily get me into?
I bribed everybody.
She brought food.
Yeah, she did buy me coffee, so that helped.
But I'm glad to be here and I'm excited to see where the community can go. There's a lot of potential.
Absolutely. I'm thankful for the patience. There's been a couple of times that I've had to email and say, hey, we didn't, we didn't have a quorum for our board minutes, but here's my director's report, like that kind of stuff. And so I'm, I'm thankful for the patience and for the kindness that, I mean, everyone in this room has shown me and especially with those hard conversations that do happen on Main. And sometimes that those are really, really hard conversations that I'm kind of walking into blind most of the time because the last time Main Street was operating, I was 18 and in Denver, Colorado. And so those, those conversations are, at the beginning, weren't always fun. But I've always felt welcomed into this and, and over here and encouraged by all of you. Absolutely. And encouraged by the business owners on Main Street, absolutely. And so I'm, I'm thankful for patience from all of you in this room and with the people on Main Street. Just being able to work with us and allowing us to prove to them that we're here to stay and, and allowing us to get our feet underneath us a little bit more before we ask for memberships and that kind of stuff. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm just grateful and for the patience that I've received from a lot of different people.
Commissioners, any other questions? Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll move us on to our agreement that we have with Franklin County Development Council. I think it's stayed the same too, funding.
It's stayed the same, but Dean's not here because he's on a prospect call.
Okay. Any, any questions or concerns? I would say that just like before, you reach out to Paul in the meantime and hopefully he can get back to you. Let's move on to our agreement that we have with the Elizabeth Layton Center.
Hello, Mayor Crowley, Commissioners. It's wonderful to be with you by Zoom this evening.
Any comments?
Uh, we're not getting any.
I didn't hear Matt.
Hello, Mayor Crowley and Commissioners, can you all hear me okay?
I think it might just be easy just to say no.
No comments right now. And we'll get back with Leslie.
In case you had any questions.
Yeah.
Leslie, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
As Commissioner Kayler just stated, if we have any questions or comments, we'll just shoot you an email and then just wait for the response. But I think at this point, I don't think anybody has any questions or comments for you. We appreciate you showing up at least.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for supporting our mental health center.
It is the same amount as last year too, I guess, I'll ask that question. It's different.
Director Landis, is it the same, same amount as last year? Do you know?
Yeah, okay.
Oh. Yes, it is the same as last year.
About 68,000 last year. 68,900.
All right. Commissioners, as, as I said before, if you have any questions or comments or need any information from any one of those partners, reach out to them. Feel free to reach out to them. And, direct your questions to them. Okay, that'll move us on to item two, which is our ordinance revising Article 7 of the Municipal Code of Cemeteries. Director Tharp, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a subject that we've been over a number of times now, so I am not really going to delve deeply into this. I will apologize upfront, in your packet, the ordinance that was sent was not correct. You have in front of you on that sheet of paper that corrected ordinance, there were two small things we just wanted to point them out right quick. The first had to do with the glass bar, glass jars, bottles, tin cans. That line is omitted. So it does not show up on your paper copy. And then down at section 7-05, that actually should read 7-105. And so those changes have been made at that point in time. That said, I would entertain any questions that you have. Like I say, I'm not going to, I think we've covered this over and over, though I think we've done this for about four meetings now. I hope the public has heard some of the things we've had to say. And we will continue.
Commissioners, any questions for Director Tharp? Are we okay with moving this on to our 18th agenda?
Yes.
That's what we'll do. Thank you, Director Tharp.
Thank you.
All right, item three is a resolution for wastewater rates with Director Landis and Director Tharp.
Thank you. So this is a continuation of the conversations we've had regarding our utilities and just our financial positions in all three utilities. And early on, actually, a couple of months ago, we started the conversation with water and wastewater. And so while we're still sorting out, moving, doing some internal work on the electric fund, we decided it would be a good time to bring back to you the rate resolutions for water and wastewater. So the first one that's in your packet is the wastewater resolution. And the way that this is set up, it has been updated by numbers only, basically regarding the rates. And in the, in the memo, there was an update as to what was included and to jog your memory. The purpose for, I guess, the purpose for looking at the current rates and proposing to you that we make some changes to those rates is the financial position that we have put together for you over a five-year financial outlook. And in that outlook, we showed you some of the capital projects and the things that are both, that we have amounts on now and some that are still on our pending list of things that are yet to come and how those projects and updated expenditures over those five years will impact our bottom line. And then if we do nothing, where we would end up in those financial or the ending fund balances in each of those years. And so what we've reviewed with you is a couple of different options. And the last time we spoke for the wastewater fund, you were comfortable with exploring further or bringing back to you as far as a potential rate change, the, an increase to the, the minimum charge in the year of 2023 of $1 and in the years of 2024 to 2027, $2 each of those years. And then an annual rate increase of 5% each year over the previous year. So what we've done here for you is a, if you recall in our early on conversations, we provided you a table of a bunch of different options. And what we did here, just as a summary, is that we provided the, the left side is a we did here, just as a summary, is that we provided, the left side is a residential customer. It is the amount that is more of the average use of a customer. And so in this case, we're using the four CCS as an example. And the small businesses in the middle and the large businesses on the right. And so for the monthly charge change, for, for the current bill proposed, I'm, I'm sorry, against the proposed 2023 bill, it's $1.68 monthly charge change if you were to accept these new rates and move ahead with eventually accepting these, this rate resolution. I know that in the past, we've done some quick calculations. So I did go ahead and calculate for you annually for that same residential customer is $20.16. For a small business that uses an average of 20 CCS, the change monthly is $4.48 and an annual change of $53.76. And for a large business, and these are averages, remember, because for businesses, that's related. So it's, it's all dependent upon the water that they use, not just an average like your residential. But the monthly change would be 1405 and an annual change of 16860. We didn't put together any more of a slideshow for you here, because we have reviewed this several times. And you still have your materials from before. If you have questions about how we got to this point, what those projects were, any of those things, we're happy to go back and review all of that with you. Again, if you need to, what we would ask is that if you ask those questions and/or let us know how you'd like to proceed, we would recommend that if this is the direction you want to go, that we would go ahead and move this rate resolution onto your regular meeting on the 18th.
This is again is where we need to be as far as leftover funds at the end of each year for the future years.
It'll get us closer to the target balance.
Target balance.
As we've talked about before, really, you know, if you're looking five years out, lots of things can change between today and five years from now. The importance of priority of those projects, the cost of those projects, expenditures that you didn't anticipate, all of those things. But what we, this will get us closer in our overview, our, our long-term look. And then we've also talked to you about coming back to you every year and reviewing with you exactly where we've landed. So that if we need to make an additional change, we can always do that in the future. But this has been proposed to you as a five-year rate resolution.
How much time is left on the sewer surcharge?
That ends in 2024. I want, I'm not sure if that's April or if it's the end of the year. I would need to check on that.
And what was that one for?
That one was for the original, sorry, you can jump in.
It was there to build the plant.
Yes.
It's what built that plant or part of what built that plant.
I know we had some discussion on, on different utilities about the verbiage for like the minimum charge. I don't think we talked about this, the minimum charge. Would it make sense to people to almost change that? And it doesn't change obviously the rate structure to like cap fee, connection charge, something, because minimum to me implies, if I hear that I'm being charged a minimum charge, I would assume that I'm using the minimum. I, I feel like if I called in and someone says, well, the minimum charge is $20, and your volume charge is 14, I would be like, somebody being charged $20.
In this case, you are.
Okay.
In this case, for wastewater, you are. A minimum bill that you will get each month is right now, today, the $19.
So it's like the base?
It is the base. And we did talk about changing that. And we, because it said minimum, in this case, minimum is actually right. In the case of the water utility, minimum is not correct, and that's why we changed it to base. We probably could change this to base to make them consistent, and it's probably not going to make a difference. But in this case, that is the charge that will show up on your bill monthly, always, regardless of how much you use. And in the water fund, that's not the case. It's actually billed by CCS. And remember, this is because residential is billed at an average of your December through March usage for water. So then that's from April till the next March. That's how that's established.
Commissioners, any other questions for Director Landis or Director Tharp? You okay with moving the wastewater to our 18th agenda?
I will mention that I had sent this to our city attorney to review and had not gotten those comments back. Language-wise, we're fine, but he did make a really good suggestion to make sure that in the tables in both resolutions, we listed the years as opposed to phases or steps to make it more clear for those that are reading it. So we will make those slight changes. We'll make sure we enumerate those for you at the regular meeting.
Okay, we'll move that one on to our agenda. That'll move us on to item four, which is our resolution of our water rates.
Thank you. This resolution is the same. However, it is structured quite a bit differently. If you notice, that wastewater resolution was two pages and this one is a lot more. I don't, I didn't count them. So in this rate resolution, it does have a page dedicated to every rate class in the water utility. And so the, the rate resolution is fairly extensive. To remind you of the conversation that we had before, this was the utility where we had an immediate concern. And the immediate concern really does carry over. In fact, I did just a quick rundown of financials today. And we came in, or we're coming in probably just about on target to where we sat. And remember, our conversation was, a lot of times we'll come in under budget so that money rolls over. And in this case, we're, we're pretty darn close. So that tells me that our long-term forecast was pretty much on target and that we do need more of that impact upfront. And because it is a small utility, it does take longer for that to start to accumulate. So based on those conversations we had before, the base rate in this one is, it is, it did increase by $2, approximately $2 in the year 2023. And I say approximately because our goal was to bring that base rate up to $10 for residential. But because we have all these other rate classes, some of them, they're not equal across the board. So as we made those adjustments, we came as close to $2 as we could, but rounded to the 50 cents. So some of them might actually be $1.60 something, or maybe it's $2.31 or whatever that might be. But the goal was to get it to a point where relatively close to that. And so that in '24 and '25, we get that increase by $2 and even $2 each of those two years, which is what we had talked about. And then the rate increases for the actual usage, the CCS, are a 10% increase in 2023 and then 8, 6, 4, and 4 over the next four years. And that was to put the bulk of that increase upfront. And we'll taper off over time to get those, get that started so that we can start replenishing that fund balance. And as a reminder, this has not had a rate increase in this water utility for 10 years. So that is why we are, we really do need to take a hard look at this and make sure that we're moving in the right direction with that fund balance.
The base charge again, that's $2 per month each year. Is that right?
Yes.
It reads, it's a little confusing in the recommendation here, that $2 each year and wrapped in there is 50 cents. I guess you're.
You're correct. I can, I can update that to add to the packet for Wednesday. So it's $2 per month. That's how water is billed. You have a base charge. It's a monthly base charge and then a monthly usage charge as well. Yes, thank you for catching that.
I guess you said the last water rate increase was 2018. So it's been, for about four years.
That is correct.
It was 18? Okay.
The last increase that we took was, was in 18. So it's been about five years.
Okay. So to cover this, I'm sorry, Matt, can you go back one slide? There you go. So the residential, this is the midpoint for water residential. So the increase monthly to that residential user would be approximately $4.36 or $52 a year. I'm sorry, $52.32 per year. For a small business, the impact of this would be $10.40 per month or $1.2480 per year. And the monthly charge, or monthly increase for a large business would be $32.51 or $390.12 annually for that large customer, that large business. And of course, those are all estimates. Those are just based on the rate changes. We selected those CCS as an average user. So any business or any residential customer would be different than that just based on their actual usage. And we would, again, recommend that we bring this rate resolution back to you for approval or consideration of approval at the 18th meeting unless you've got questions or want to do further research.
Do you have this slide?
Oh, yes. Matt, can you, for one more? I did one more slide for you. This is just a combination. So at the bottom of both, of each of these sections is a total for water and wastewater. We talked about early on that by discussing all three utilities at one time, how would that impact them overall? And, and of course, I can't give to you yet the electric side because we're not quite there. But on this, the combination of water and wastewater that we proposed to you would be $6.04 per month for the average residential customer, which is a total of $72.48 per year, $14.88 per month for a small business, which is $1.7856 per year, and $46.56 for a large business, which is $558.72 per year. And this is just for water and wastewater.
Just so people understand, we had to front load this was to make up for the four years. We never had any rate increases, even though our costs were going up every year.
We have five years?
Five years.
Five years. Yeah.
That's right.
And because we have such a small utility, the number of customers overall is not so large that you, you really can't recoup that cost at a really fast pace. So front-loading it early makes more sense than something, you know, we've talked about before, was a small incremental increase year over year. But in this case, it makes more sense to maybe to stagger it where the, the larger increases in year one and then, and then declining over time.
Well, I know we're talking about five years at a time now. But as Commissioner Kayler stated before, I think it's, it's pertinent of us to have this discussion once a year to, to review this just in case. We may need to make some adjustments accordingly.
It's on the, it's on the calendar for September every year, Commissioner.
All right. It's a date. Commissioners, any other questions on our water rates? Are we okay with moving this on to our 18th agenda? All right. Thank you, Director Landis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Tharp.
Utility question. Dennis, I know we went through a period here where we got below zero for several days.
We did.
Not quite as bad as it was two years ago. But how was our availability of power? Did we have any issues with regard to?
Our power was not a problem. We, we really didn't have a huge spike in gas like we saw two years ago. I think we had more problems, quite honestly, with water main breaks and, and those types of things. And I think we've seen more of those this year than we, than we've seen for quite a while. But as far as the, the cost of power was concerned, we did not see anything that created any kind of huge, huge spike. We did see some spikes in there, which you always do. It doesn't matter, you know, when the, when it dips or when it goes up, you see some spikes. But overall, we were very consistent.
I guess if they name a storm, that's bad news. They didn't name this one. So that's a good name.
They didn't name this one, yeah. They've been naming some others that we're yet to see some impact from. So we'll wait, you know, we'll have this conversation again maybe. But, or now we're good.
Appreciate you.
That'll move us on to comments by our city manager. Comments by city commissioners. Commissioner Graves?
No comment today.
Commissioner Kayler?
Not today.
Commissioner Clayton?
None today.
Mayor Brotham, Skidmore?
Same way.
I have no comments either. Few announcements. After we adjourn this meeting, we will continue our commission retreat here. January 16th is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So our study session is canceled and city offices are closed. We have a regular meeting at 7:00 PM this, Wednesday, the 18th. That has been changed. And January 25th is LKM Local Government Day. Anything else? Come before the commission this evening.